Right, Doctor? Notice is hereby given that a special council meeting of the Town of LaGuardia, Texas, will be held Tuesday, the fifteenth day of October twenty nineteen at SIS Cockham and the City Hall Building on one twenty-two Front Under Street. Call to order at six oh two. The Reverend Doctor Claudia Malvin from Municipal Church in Portisbo will lead us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, thank you for those gathered here today, those called to govern, to nurture, and to protect the community of LaGuardia. May a spirit of peace and well-being descend upon this room as today as we think to cooperate with one another and seek your will together. Please guide us and give us wisdom this evening. And may all that is done and said be for your purpose and to glorify you. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On my behalf, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Reverend Doctor. We'll call Alma. Mayor Susie Houston?
Here.
Councilmember Michael Carter is not here. Councilmember John Howard is not here. Councilmember Frank Dabalos?
Here.
Rolando Gonzalez?
Here.
Victor Worrell?
Here.
I did not hear from...I'm sure they're running. Item four, oath of office from municipal judge Jim Hunter and alternate judge Benny Ochilla. All due municipal judges, Mr. Hunter, Judge Hunter, and then Judge Ochilla. I, James Hunter?
I, James Hunter?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute?
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of LaGuardia's municipal judge?
Of LaGuardia's municipal judge.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability?
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitutional laws?
The constitutional laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Judge Benny, soon as he's finished, what? I, Benny Ochilla?
I, Benny Ochilla.
Do solemnly swear?
I do.
That I will faithfully?
Will faithfully.
Execute the duties?
我对
Of the office?
Of the office.
Of LaGuardia's municipal judge?
Of LaGuardia's municipal judge.
For the state of Texas?
For the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Protect, defend.
The constitutional laws?
The constitutional laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God. If you do not? (Applause) Benny, just me? Item five, presentation from LaGuardia's volunteer fire department. Chief, good.
Thank you.
Judges? So good you're here suing judges, right?
Evening, everybody. I'm Chris Romero here on behalf of the volunteer fire department to discuss an important topic and present two AEDs to the Town of LaGuardia. So every year, over three hundred thousand people will suffer out-of-pot hospital cardiac arrest, and the percentage of survivors is a very small fraction there. One thing that's been shown to be significantly important for survival, and also not only survival, but long-term recovery and function thereafter, is early defibrillation. You can more than double the chances of somebody surviving an out-of-pot hospital cardiac arrest if they've been defibrillated early. There was a study that was done that looked at patients that had out-of-pot hospital defibrillation use, and a majority of those actually had a rhythm that was shockable, finally. So through the efforts of the volunteer fire department, we've raised funds, and we've had contribution from Walmart as a local entity to be able to purchase these two devices. One will be with the police department, and they will now have two AEDs in their patrol vehicles and will be with the fire department when they respond to things. So it's given us an opportunity to hopefully save our lives in our current world. So thank you for your continued support of the fire department and our first responders that are on scene with us as well.
Chief, can you take a picture?
Yep, stand there real quick.
Let me take a picture? And that's you and her.
No, no, no. Don't shy. Don't shy. Y'all, y'all get it. You're all right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the coffee tournament. Put on this meeting.
Thank you. Did you all the sponsors make it happen?
Exactly. Thank you for sponsoring. Alma, do we have any open forum?
No.
All right. With the council's permission?
Thank you.
I'll have them to the next one. Consider agenda items. Item J. Is that okay? All right. Item seven, consent agenda items. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted for approval by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, then item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have minutes from the September mid-ten meeting, September seventeenth meeting, and September twenty-fourth meeting.
Second motion, accept the minutes from the September seventeen meeting.
Second motion.
Motion informed made by Councilwoman Worrell, submitted by Councilwoman Gonzalez, to accept the September tenth, seventeenth, and twenty-fourth meeting. Minutes. Meeting minutes. Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Dabalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Motion passes. I will jump over to J. Consideration of possible action regarding public services waste collection contract. We have John Dittler from Public Services. John and Craig?
Jesse.
Jesse. I'm the donor manager. Jesse's our route supervisor to make sure they have it here for him. I know in here it says you started in two thousand and three. The new contract is, but I've been here since eighty-two doing it. I know we had it before that, so it's been a long time. And we appreciate the business. What we're offering is a renewal of the current package. In changing E C K language to eliminate the fuel factor. Normally, when you have fuel in there, fuel jumps a lot, your price increase jumps a lot, it makes it fluctuate a lot. If you just make a hundred percent water, shoe, or trash, and take away the fuel, it's a lot more steady for you. And you have a five percent cap also, so it can't go above that. I've seen it as high as nineteen percent, but you guys are protected with the five percent. Without the fuel in there, you won't have great big increases every year like you normally do. So it'll help you a lot. Then you still continue to get all the free services you receive and everything. But that's pretty much it to smooth out your C P I and keep giving you what we're currently giving you.
Thank you, John. Questions? Judges? Yeah. This is Councilwoman Smith. Thank you for coming. The ninety-six gallon quart two times a week, all that is the same as currently, right?
I'm sorry, the same as what?
Is it, it's the same as we currently have, right?
Yeah, yes. Yeah. You have once-a-month rush, and you also have recycling services that are in there too.
So.
Yeah, I have a lot of rush, by the way.
Any other questions?
Do we recycle glass?
Nobody recycles glass anymore. The only ones that tried, that the city McAllen got an actual glass pulverizer, they got a grant for it. It actually makes it into sand, but there's a lot of mechanical issues with it, so nobody recycles glass anymore. Yeah, you can't get rid of it.
Any questions?
Yes, all of the proposed changes here are within the purview of the public councils to adopt.
No approval?
I have a motion to approve the contract with the public services.
I'll second that. Motion informed made by Councilwoman Worrell, submitted by Council Mayor, was to approve the public services waste collection contract. Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Dabalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Motion passes. Thank you, John. Item eight, consideration possible action to sponsor the third annual duathlon. I said it right? I usually don't. By the Bay scheduled for Sunday, January twenty-six, twenty twenty. Alma?
Ms. Karen Ward was asking about trying to get this approved because they're going to start advertising, and she said basically they just need traffic control for help from the police and the fire department, and that would be all the support they would need from us.
Just traffic control from the police?
Yes.
Chiefs, are you all okay with that date for traffic control?
Yes, ma'am.
For the duathlon on January twenty-sixth?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions, discussions, comments? Is it wonderful, ma'am? Things I want to think?
Okay.
I have a motion to approve sponsoring the end of duathlon by the Bay with police for Sunday?
I'll second.
Motion informed made by Councilwoman Smith, submitted by Councilwoman Gonzalez, to sponsor the third annual duathlon by the Bay on January twenty-sixth with help from the police and fire departments. Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Dabalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Yes. Motion passes. Item V, consideration possible action regarding policy governing travel by Towne Boys. Mr. Lozuna?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmembers have prepared a draft of policy that was modeled after the policy of Councilman Carter presented to us, but modified for reuse by a municipality. And the main high points here are the vesting of the approval for travel events, travel expenditures with the town council. We're still going to be using the same form with some updated values that the town is using. There's no requirement that anything on there be changed. Process of submitting them up the chain of command will largely remain the same. Employees will be responsible for submitting it to supervisory personnel. But the ultimate decision on approval will come before this time. So the policy mandates that the applicable form be submitted with plenty of time, sufficient time, to allow consideration of the council in time term. Otherwise, it incorporates all of the values that are established by governmental guidelines elsewhere, federal, trans laws, and so forth. And, but it puts it all in one place where employees, subjects, and laws, they can look at and understand what the point is to do, and submit the request.
It's a two-week.
Oh, yeah, are you talking about the out-of-town? Page two. I'm sorry, Mayor.
I couldn't find it.
No. There was a two-week reference? Yeah, which lines us up with our five-two. Any other questions?
Yes. Thank you, Assistant Speaker. The quick question, the premium rates, does that change annually?
It doesn't change annually necessarily. It changes when the federal government decides it's time for a change. Sometimes for annually, I think there was a time where it went for quite a while without it, maybe three or four years sometime.
Can we attach just a simple copy of that? Or can you just sell a little, I feel maybe sometimes employees, they don't know what that is, and where can they, or maybe they're unaware of like to find that information? You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's available online and in certain publications. It wouldn't be a matter of saying we provide a company because it's quite a comprehensive document.
I understand, but I mean like there's five things that we would...
Sure. We could certainly summarize the most important or most applicable.
But the separate of this, I just feel like so people know.
Yeah.
If I do have a downtown room?
Sure, sure.
I'm going to be trouble.
And at a minimum, we can direct people back to the website where all that stuff can be moved to.
Is a two-week notice, is there is a two-week notice?
Yes.
For requesting funds for this and that. And is it a two-week notice before our council meeting? Or is it a two-week notice before the day of the travel? Because if our council meeting will not fall within, I guess we wouldn't know it all.
Well, there's...
There's council...
Anything that requires pre-approval by the council, obviously, would have to be submitted with enough time for the council to appear on the next council meeting and it does be approved by the council. But otherwise, things like request for reimbursement or something along those lines would have to be presented, given to Alma basically, with two weeks notice. So all could be unplanned with that.
You verbalized what I was trying to say.
Right.
It just wasn't coming out. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't... Does this cover elected officials as well?
It would, and you're right. I guess my focus was on the employees, but there are occasions where elected officials would also be able to utilize travel policy. Like, I can make that amendment right away, you know, as soon as I get back to the office, to make sure it specifies that this applies to both employees and any other elected official that requests a travel.
It'd be the same policy, right?
It'd be the same exact policy, same exact requirement. I know that we're extending it to the C E C or travel on the old policy. Lack of policy. Which, sorry, that's a bit more than right.
And does it say that it has to come from, that certain ones come from the body?
Yes, it is.
The bottom of each two sets?
By immediate supervisors, so who approves the managers?
There are, for example, under the definition of reimbursement, there is a requirement that those reimbursements be approved by the town council. And there are a couple of other references. Right, yeah.
But does the manager have to submit approval from the town council?
That's forbidden. There's no provision in here that would allow a manager to approve his own council... I'm sorry. Trap. They'd all have to come to that council.
That'd be cool.
As well as any council members. And I think, you know, depending on the amount of activity we have in that regard, it would either be something that the council is always having to deal with, or only having to deal with certain number of times. I think our history has been, even if prior decisions had been sent to the council for approval, that would have only amounted to a handful of things per year, so it's not... But the council certainly has the option to delegate that authority. I was getting the sense that the council decided that authority would remain with the council in this case.
I just have a question. Does this address, or maybe this is not the place, if somebody books a registration for a conference and looks over it and then doesn't go, and we lose it? Does this, or is this the place you're visiting?
No, I mean, it could be. It is possible that we can address that kind of scenario by establishing basically reasons why that might happen. In other words, basically attributing faults for not being able to go, and if it causes the city to have to pay for something that it's not to benefit of, we could certainly infer that that's something the council would like to see. In other words, something like reimbursement being denied, or not being... Of course, that's also a decision that the council could take up as each request comes in, if those circumstances prevent this. In other words, you wouldn't have to necessarily have to have a language and policy to cover that, to substantiate the council's denial of a request for reimbursement. Let's say we have an employee who caused us to approve something, we lost the money, and then we see you reverse it for something related to that.
Oh, but I wasn't talking about reimbursement. I was talking about like it comes to the council for approval, that I'm going to attend the seminar in two months.
Right.
And then I know, and then they approve it, and we booked the registration, we booked the hotel, and then, but I don't go. That's wrong.
Now, we're talking about basically a collection effort against the employee. I mean, it is possible for a municipality to do that. It's not likely that a municipal employee will be someone from whom we can collect that type of... Unless we were to establish something whereby we're getting authorization for deductions for future pay, which would require basically employees to sign off. We can do that. I mean, that's something that we can lead to do. But it's basically putting into place another mechanism, which may take it out of being the proper subject for this policy and maybe being a subject for some other policy like the personnel policy, which will be before you next month to look at.
Alma, your experience so far, has that happened a lot?
Probably three or four times.
This year? The past five years?
The past two years, most.
And then we lost money?
Because, and a lot of times, like the registration, they have the early break special where you get, you may pay two fifty, and then after a certain day, it jumps to like three fifty or four hundred. And so then we do the registration, and then we might be able to cancel the hotel, but the registration is usually non-refundable, and so we've lost that.
So, yeah, that's probably something, because I know that the personnel policy manual will address the issue, and the council will have the option to weigh in on the prospect of not necessarily just travel, but any situation which really becomes indebted to the city. And employers in Texas have the option of putting certain documentation into place that allows reimbursement through wage deduction. But that's really kind of more of a general policy subject. Any other questions?
Can I make a motion to approve employee travel document with a few changes of the discuss, and then adding this last change that was already discussed to the policy that was in the United States? Motion informed made by Councilwoman Smith, submitted by Councilmember Dabalos, to approve the employee travel policy with the changes discussed. Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Dabalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Yes. Motion passes. Item C, consideration possible action regarding purchase of time clock plus software and related items. Alma?
I think this is a long-term coming. I've talked to a couple of council members, and we're talking about that, and I think it would... I would think it was going to be way more expensive than what it was, so they're saying twelve hundred is the initial, and then the maintenance would be two, eight hundred dollars a year, and that would cover all the employees, and they would have... I don't know, Ms. Smith was going to view the demo, I don't know if she got a chance to, because they did send me a demo.
No.
It was like ten hours long, and it kind of explains, because it'll track vacation, sick leave, and whether the salary's paid by a grant, or overtime, or regular. It covers all that, and it pretty much breaks it. And the fantastic thing about that is that it's compatible to my M I P account system, so it would just input, import to that. And like right now, the vacation and sick leave, and first one is, I have a spreadsheet on every employee, and that's how I track them. So this would really be the help.
I see on the invoice that it's expired.
Yes, I spoke to the gentleman. He said they would still be good, because I thought it's going to be canceled, so, yeah. Yeah, he said it would be good.
This would help after you're not with us.
And so we're thinking it could take a party a month to completely set up, so... What I'm thinking, I don't know, is I mean, I'm just thinking by time, you do the transition and all that.
Any questions, Alma?
I think the motion that we require is, it's not actually a time clock, it's appropriate.
Yes.
Time clock.
Yes. I see.
Long meeting. Motion informed made by Councilwoman Worrell, submitted by Councilwoman Smith, to purchase the time clock and the software and related items. Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Dabalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Worrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith? Yes. Motion passes. Item D, consideration possible action regarding recommendation of planning and zoning commission to replant the South Penn Valley Rock Club, course of nineteen nineteen B lots eleven and twelve. Alma?
Mr. Lozuna, do you want to take this, because there was some confusion with...
I can. The replant issue that came before the P N Z was approved, we discovered meetings on the title on the plant documents, inadvertent labeling of one of the lots as being twelve as opposed to eleven. The P N Z approved replant on the condition that be corrected. Our understanding, hearing from the engineer, from the company that did it, it wasn't the engineer who did it, it was just a representative of the company who drew the short straw and appeared, happened to appear that day, that he was going to send a corrective document that day, or maybe here today. Alma, did we receive that?
I did not.
Did not receive a corrective document. The substance of the change that was approved by the P N Z was, if you look at the second page of this, your book there, the highlight is...
It says twelve twelve.
The reference to lot twelve on the top, I'm sure they've read lot eleven, and the reference to lot twelve on the bottom, of course, we read lot twelve. The change is hard to see because it was very minor. If you look at the kind of the before and after pictures here, there's a dotted line that runs diagonally through the square lot. If you look at the second page, there's a little dot in the middle, which is sort of like a pinch point that was pulled south a little bit, that was needed to correct an improvement issue. And so what we approved was that change, that was the substance of change. And so the P N Z's action specified for approving this and with the correction that the top be labeled lot eleven and the bottom be labeled lot twelve. So before this by, that's the substance of what would be confirmed. And I guess at some point, this company will give us a map that has the right numbers. But that's what we'll...
Until we get that map, we're going to...
No, you can improve it, basically, as long as we specify what we're approving is the change, the substance of the change, and a properly labeled map. Now, where it really will matter is what gets filed with the county. And so obviously, we don't have a piece of paper that can be signed today by the mayor. I don't know when we're expecting to get that, Alma, do you?
Actually, it takes a couple of weeks.
Oh, before we get the weird paper?
The minor one, yes. It takes a couple of weeks.
The substantial, Councilwoman Worrell?
What we're doing is making eleven and twelve, or not though.
No, that was the impression that we all had when we looked at the title. It was apparently this mere inadvertence that they numbered the two lots the same over at the drafting table.
It says to replant this to combine two lots into one lot.
Oh. Oh, yes, it looks like that was our mistake. That was, that was, again, the impression we had for one PNC. You know, the, the substance of the change that, that was presented and, and was approved is the addition of that little pinch point there, kind of a third of the way down that diagonal dotted line, and pulling it, pulling it south a little bit.
That's, that's all we were moving that line.
Yeah, moving that line so that where it was straight before, now it's kind of at an angle, which was, it apparently was moved just enough to accommodate the approaching structure and provide as far as...
Because there's a house there.
All right, so it's, so it's still two lots.
Still two lots. Eleven and twelve. A little bit south. Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it was, the, I, I, as I explained with PNC, this is, this is something that landowners can deal with in, in a number of ways. You know, either variance or, or replating, especially. The replating is actually the more, the more difficult and onerous as far as the landowner is concerned, and involves a more comprehensive procedure. In other words, it's the harder, more sort of formal procedure that a landowner would go through in dealing with these problems. And so, I mean, there are benefits to that, where it cleans up kind of issues that might exist in the future if this were merely taken care of by virtue of variance. So, but this is, it went through the process at Estes first with PNC and then to Town Pop.
What would be appropriate motion, do you know, unless the replat is two of the one?
It would just, it would be to, to approve the, the, the action by the PNC. In other words, if the PNC has already taken action which contemplates that this typo shouldn't be here, and so if we're just approving what they did, then we're, we're approving it the right way.
Where, where's Arco's Gardens on, in relation to this?
What, what's the area of interest in it?
Like, here's plaza to the left.
It's the circle.
Arco Gardens is where? Is it up on top up here?
Is there a bigger map? Oh, you know, I have, I have the bigger map yesterday.
It is in Arco.
Just a part of it.
Well, here you go.
It is in the, that side.
It's, it's, it's the end of Arco, right? You know where the, they built those junior houses, right? Steve Davis's house.
And then there's a, a chain across.
Well, they took the chain down, but yeah, but like, so that lot they're talking about right there is the one on the left side.
Okay.
Right, and so they want to move that line over a little bit, right? Yeah.
It's Davis's house.
Yeah, it's Steve Davis's.
Motion to approve planning and zoning replating of lots eleven and twelve.
That's right. That would be good.
Motion for made by Councilwoman Gonzalez, second by Councilwoman Douglas, to approve the planning and zoning commission's replat of lots eleven and twelve.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Item E, consideration possible action under Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash twenty-nine, establishing a checking account expenditures for the EDA grant. Alma?
The EDA grant is the grant that we're getting for seven hundred thousand for the Eco Center. It's going to be the infrastructure for the water sewer lines that they're going to lay down. And it's seven hundred thousand, and when we, the mayor and I met with, we had that meeting, they did mention that we can't co-mingle the funds with our general fund or any other fund. And so we're going to set up a checking account. And usually our grants, we do drawdowns, like if we get an invoice with the contractor, we do a drawdown, and then we pay them. Well, this one doesn't work like that. This is on a reimbursement basis, so whenever we get an invoice, we're going to have to pay it, so we'll have to transfer the funds from the general fund until we get reimbursed. And then, because it's on a reimbursement basis, not a drawdown basis, which is a big difference. Because the, because the reimbursement would take a couple of months before we get it, you know, so we're going to be out of that money, but it's going to have to sit in the EDA account so we can pay out the contractors. And it's, I believe the grant is for two years, so it's not going to be like we have to dish out seven hundred thousand. It's, it's going to be in chunks, you know? Make sense?
Make a motion to approve... Make a motion to approve establishing a checking account for the EDA grant.
One second.
Motion for made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Carter, to approve Resolution Number twenty nineteen twenty-nine for the EDA checking account.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No. Motion passes.
May, may you recognize the action?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay.
I did.
Six thirty.
Let the record say, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Carter arrived at six twenty-nine.
Right.
I wrote it down, and then my assistant was Alma. We were just discussing things. She got it. Thank you. Item F, consideration possible, possible action under Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash thirty, appointing the official newspaper for Town Publications for twenty nineteen twenty-three fiscal year. Alma?
This is just an annual thing that we have to do. We have to officially designate the Port Isabel Press, because it's the only newspaper that circulates here, and as our official newspaper, we'll do all our publications.
Any questions? Make that motion. Second?
Second.
Motion for made by the mayor, second by Councilwoman Gonzalez, to appoint the official newspapers of Town, of South Padre Almira, Port Isabel South Padre Almira is the official newspaper.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
No.
Councilmember Douglas? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
I don't have a choice.
I mean, yes. Motion passes. It's not like we have a big talk to be...
Zooming on the typo.
Item G, consideration possible action regarding contract with the City of Port Isabel for AMI Services. We have City Manager Hakuma is here from Port Isabel. Everybody has a question, excuse me. Chief Drabbe was back there, and Chief Tony was back there.
Six years, long time. Lot things can happen. Three quarters of a million dollars over six years. Does that have to be left alone?
Yeah. The reason why we put that in there, and there's actually, there's two things that are... I'm lucky, saw the letter that I sent. And I had talked to Mr. Bella about this in summer. We have the original issue, which is of the ambulances themselves. And we had applied for an ambulance from TDA. We were hoping to apply with the City of LaGuardia also. But how it turned out, the City of LaGuardia liked to not participate in that grant. So we were awarded the ambulance, but because it's HUD funded, it can only be used within the applicant's jurisdiction, which means that we can only use that ambulance in Port Isabel. We cannot use it in LaGuardia. So we have two ambulances, which we have one that's recently been refurbished back in twenty sixteen. It's coming up on the end of its life. So we could use that ambulance to do the runs to LaGuardia Vista for the time being, but eventually we're going to have to replace it. So what I had talked to Mr. Bella about is, look, you know, we had this chance to get this new ambulance. Now we're going to have to buy another ambulance. We, what we can do is we can allocate whatever, you know, proportion would be roughly, you know, what y'all are using out of that ambulance and refinance it. So the reason why I put that five years in there is because it's contemplating that, since we had this other issue that came up about with Los Fresnos, that we would kind of hold off on buying that new ambulance for a year or so, and then let the time of that period ambulance lapse that we're going to pay off. Because they haven't by law for about five years, with the traffic going back and forth to Brownsville at high speeds at Harms, and they wear out pretty fast. And so we're able to remount them, but even a remounting, you know, that's like an eight-year, ninety thousand dollar operation. And after one remount, you have to buy new ambulance, which is two hundred K. So we basically said, okay, what would be the fraction that pertains to LaGuardia Vista? What's the five years' life of this ambulance that we're going to buy? And we're only buying it because we have to serve you, and we can't use our new ambulance certainly. So that's, that's why that's in...
Is, is there a scenario where that ambulance is not working, and the ambulance that can't come here is sitting idle in the, in the, in the shop, and suddenly there's an emergency, and it's going to be, it can't come here?
I think that in an extreme dire emergency, we could, but I think what HUD and the state are going to say is, did you have documentation in place to prevent that from happening? You know, if something happens, well, it happens, we have to use it. We're not going to let somebody die because of regulation. But, you know, what HUD was very clear about is, okay, because these funds were not also awarded to LaGuardia Vista, you cannot use anything in LaGuardia Vista. And so you have to state that in writing. And so we always had a contract with, with the City of LaGuardia Vista that said, only one ambulance at a time will go to LaGuardia Vista out of the, out of the number of ambulances that we have. So we basically showed that to the state, so that's not good. Now, you have to give us a letter saying you're not going to use this ambulance in LaGuardia Vista. Now, if something happens, will we use it? Yes, but we have to take steps, and that's why we have to buy this other ambulance to show the federal government and the state, we are not, you know, using this ambulance outside of the area that it was granted. I wish all the, for this, the grant was easier for us, but I, I know there's, you know, things come up, or, you know, whatever.
You didn't know about it.
Yeah, well, I think that you had it, I think there was, you could apply for a fire truck or the ambulance, and I think y'all wanted to get the fire truck, and so you can't do the public... It is what it is, but we need the ambulance, you know, it's, it's a necessary thing. Unfortunately, as you see in this letter, it's very possible to operate EMS service. Yeah, I was just looking at the numbers before I came over here for LaGuardia Vista the last year. We, we billed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of runs in LaGuardia Vista in the, in fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. We collected, I think, sixty thousand. So there's a pretty big gap there, about a hundred and sixty thousand dollar gap that we have. You know, we have, same thing happened in Port Isabel, and I mean, our taxpayers are basically dishing out to cover that, that difference. We have started a little bit more aggressive collection efforts, and we, we have not done them in the LaGuardia area yet, but we may start doing them here too to address that issue. But it is something that needs to be addressed. You know, one of the things I shared with the mayor, with the, she and Alma, and the chief came and met with us, is that, you know, we're, we're at a point where we have a variability due to seasonality of things and how much we need the ambulance. We have too much demand really for the one ambulance, but maybe not enough for the two. But we also have the situation where the City of Los Fresnos has sent us a letter, which I shared with y'all, stating that they will no longer respond to calls in LaGuardia Vista, and furthermore, that they will not respond to calls in Port Isabel if our ambulance is serving LaGuardia Vista, and that's why I will call.
What's the problem with that?
You know, that's, I don't know. That's, that's a letter that they sent, and that's, you know, from my perspective at Port Isabel, you know, and what I, what I shared with your mayor, and what I shared with the chief, is that I can't allow them not to come respond to us, because, you know, for whatever reason. There may be some dispute between the City of LaGuardia Vista and Los Fresnos. I don't know about that. I mean, you know, there's, I don't know what, the background wall it is. I just know that we can't have that happen. So what I, what I said is, you know, it's obviously a challenge, because we're going to have to spend more money. We're going to have to spend more money to address the situation. We can try to make the best out of it, but the fact that we're not going to be the very closest South Padre Almira for Los Fresnos, that's going to generate some revenue that we can use to make up the difference. So that helps us somewhat. So we went and figured out, okay, how many calls is Los Fresnos getting? I think they're getting about fifty a year. That was what they were responding to, in here and in Port Isabel, based on the numbers we have. South Padre Almira and so forth, like it's a hundred and fifty calls that they have a year. So we, we did those numbers, okay, we're going to have this additional revenue from those calls that are not being diverted to the other cities. Of course, that's not enough to sustain an ambulance, but it goes part of the way. So then we looked at, okay, what are the peak times that we have ambulance calls? Because we really don't have enough money, I think either of us, to be paying for two ambulances full-time, you know, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. It's a very expensive proposition with the employees to have them just sitting there. So we looked at the peak times, and those were Wednesday through Saturday. So we looked at the hours during those times, and figured out, okay, what's the minimum amount of time that we need to add to our, our staffing, you know, to have this, this ambulance cover the majority of calls that are coming? And so we figured that out, and then we looked at what's the cost? So how do we allocate it between the two cities based on the number of calls and so forth? It's basically, that's how we came up with the figure that we gave. And the reason, like I said, why it eases into that other number is because we originally had been talking about just, let's, let's talk about buying another ambulance and how we can work on that because of this new requirement. But then this thing comes in, this letter comes in, and that puts it in a whole new life. But like I told the mayor, it's really, it's an opportunity for us to expand and improve our service. You know, what I've noticed, and I'm sure it's true here in LaGuardia Vista, is we have a lot of people that are retired people that are concerned about medical service, access to medical care. I know y'all just opened the clinic here with UTRGB, which is actually a big, big source of calls, actually. A lot of people go in with serious conditions, they don't realize how bad they are, and the clinic ends up calling the EMS for them, which is great. But we've got to have that response, and you know, when you're far away from a hospital, that's something that's on people's minds, particularly as they get older, if they have young kids, they worry about those kinds of things. So it's something that I think is important to the quality of life and maintaining this area is an attractive area. But obviously, in some cases, it's a matter of life and death, you know, whether or not you can have an ambulance. I think if we add this additional ambulance, there will be an additional cost, but we will have an assurance that we're not going to have this sword hanging over us from Los Fresnos, and I think we'll have a faster response than we have right now. And so we're going to gain a faster response, a little bit more assurance to the public, and we'll potentially eliminate a problem we have with Los Fresnos. And we're going to meet with Los Fresnos after we, you know, work out whether we have to review and say, look, we've met with LaGuardia Vista, they've agreed to do this. They should eliminate the concern that you have. So will you agree to respond? Because ultimately, we want them to respond to you if it's an emergency, right? We don't want them to say, hey, we're not going to come over here. To me, you know, fifty times a year is not that many times, it's once a week. To them, it's too many times. So I can't, you know, go inside their heart or their mind and change what they think about fifty times a year, but at least I can address their concern, so they continue responding over here. And if the silver lining is that we get better ambulance service, well, that's, that's great. The downside is the cost too. And, you know, like I shared with the mayor, we've, we've really struggled with the ambulance service over the past, well, it's been a struggle for many years, but we really struggled over the past few years. You know, with the reimbursements that we get from the, from the people who do have insurance, they're pretty much flat. Medicaid is very, very low reimbursement. A lot of cases, Medicaid actually will not reimburse, they'll reimburse mileage, but they won't reimburse the actual ambulance call itself. For example, if you, believe it or not, we had a case, somebody cut off their finger, and they called the ambulance. Medicaid did not reimburse it, since it's not an emergency. They could have gone to the hospital on their own to the emergency room. They didn't need to go into ambulance. I'm sure the person that had their finger cut off, that was a major emergency, but not to them. So they, they paid us, you know, so many cents a mile to go to Brownsville and back, and that's it. You know, so and there's a heavy cost to that, because you have medication, you have supplies that are used, they'll wear and tear on the ambulance, the fuel, the time of the employees, all of that. And then maybe they had some time with that, somebody else was called to the ambulance, and that ambulance was in, was in Brownsville. So it's, it's a serious matter. We've tried to raise our fees. We've raised them three or four times in a row. Still, it hasn't really come, come close to covering the cost. And so we're, we're, last year, we ran a deficit of about a hundred and eight thousand dollars with our ambulance service, you know, in, in Port Isabel. And so some of that is because of what's happening here in LaGuardia Vista, and some of it's happening in the Laguna Heights. Of course, the Laguna Heights, part that we have an annex, we get money from the USD from. So it's, you know, a fairly substantial amount of money. But regardless, we still end up losing, losing money. I mean, we've got to find a way to sustain it, and then also deal with this challenge that's come up. So I don't know if that's a long-winded answer to your question, but I'm trying to set out the contours, the situation we face, you know, what's in front of us, and what we've considered in arriving at this solution, and why it is those six years. Because it's to address the immediate issue, and then how do we get this vehicle that we need to have? What's the life of that vehicle that's going to have to be purchased in five years? If we're going to go out on a limb and buy a vehicle, we need to have some assurance that it's, you know, we have a revenue source to pay for.
Darren?
Yes, ma'am?
Would you please repeat, as I did not write it down, the cost and billing to LaGuardia Vista?
Yes, we, I, I just looked at the report from Emergicon, and the last year, from October the first to September thirtieth of, of this year, we, it was two hundred, I can tell you the number. It's two hundred and... Two hundred and twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty cents. And payments received were sixty thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and three cents. So that's the net, was about like one sixty-five, roughly, that we, that we were short. Now, obviously, there's, there's a factor in those rates that we have with people that don't pay, but obviously, it doesn't cover a whole amount, which is why we end up with a deficit of one eighty. So, I mean, there is, there is a heavy cost to, to, to sort of, you know... So, I mean, there is, there is a heavy cost to, to, to sort of, you know, this cost.
Mr. Parker, thank you, I've said hopefully.
Sure.
What is the new ambulance cost that you're looking to buy?
It's roughly two hundred thousand dollars. There's equipment that also goes with it, um, some of the equipment we can transfer from the existing ambulance, some we'd have to purchase. There's a stretcher, it's motorized, which is about twenty thousand dollars all the time. It's a hardware monitor, it's about thirty-five thousand dollars.
Is that included in two hundred, or is it extra?
It's on top of that, some of the equipment we may be able to transfer.
So, two-fifty?
Uh, it, it could be rough, rougher than that, maybe a little less than that, maybe two-forty, because some of the, some of the things we may be able to use. We, we bought two stretchers, motorized stretchers about three or four years ago, so they may, one of those stretchers may be able to continue to be in ambulance.
Then you said you, we've bought two-twenty. So, we all know that what we actually gets bought is not the actual cost, and medicine, that's just how it works. So, you bought two-twenty, you got reimbursed sixty, but what was your actual cost? Because you might, you know how doctors charge you a thousand dollars for a syringe, two hundred dollars for the Band-Aid, so.
Well, let me, I guess I knew what, and I, and I shared with the mayor our, our P and L for the ambulance system. And I don't have it in front of me, but we, we had a cost, it was, it was supposed to five hundred thousand dollars overall, and so we had about a thousand runs. So, that tells you, yeah.
But a third of those is dollars.
Roughly.
So, I'm just saying, if, if we did both two-twenty, they reimburse sixty, I'm just, I think, you know, the actual cost was to you said to you is, is not two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, but keep in mind that when you have an ambulance, you have to have an ambulance. It's the same way when a doctor bills your hospital. I mean, yeah, you go to the emergency room, and they charge you a thousand dollars to sit you up. But that thousand dollars is covering several things. One, of course, is the time of the people and the supplies and everything else, but it's also the facility that's there, that's there, available, whether or not you go or not, it's there available. It's the, the, uh, the people that don't pay that you're trying to recover. You know, in our cases, we're municipalities, so we have to recover it one way or another. We have to recover it from the people that are using the service, or from the taxpayers. We, that's the only two solutions we have. We have tried to raise our rates. One of the things that I told the mayor, we have begun, um, doing, and we haven't done it yet in the Laguna, either area, is filing lawsuits against people that pay the bills. You know, a lot of providers do that, we haven't done that, because we didn't wanna burden the local people. But it's gotten to the point where it's such a heavy cost that we're looking to do that.
Um, what was your actual, what was your budgeted amount for the ambulance?
I, I could get, I don't have it in front of me, I could get it for you, I, I didn't read that number, I don't know if you still have that paper.
But even while you were at a deficit of one eighty?
One eighty, yeah. Yeah, we, we, we took in about, you know, let me see if I can find it. I might be able to pull it up from my calendar.
So, a third of one eighty is about, you know, sixty thousand, that we were then.
You were paying thirty-two at that time.
Yes, so we are short, say, thirty thousand dollars, if, if you really wanna look at the black and white numbers.
What, what we're looking at is not the one eighty, Miss Smith, what we're looking at is, what's the cost of staffing the ambulance? Well, you know, there's the deficit, that's part of it, right? But then you have staffing another ambulance, and that's why we didn't staff it seven days a week, because you do that, you have two attendants that are making fourteen, fifty dollars an hour. Times two, times, you know, seven, times twenty-four, it, it, it comes out to be quite a bit, the benefits and everything else. So, we said, okay, what's the minimum time that we can do it that covers the most calls? If we had, if we were to have the two ambulances, twenty-four, if we were to have, had another ambulance, you're talking about, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars more.
I get that, look, I'm super passionate about having an ambulance, I've got three kids, you know, if anything happens. I'm just, I just want to figure out something that's works for both of us, I just don't quite, and I'm not saying this to attack you, I really am not. I just wanna understand, you know.
I, I would be, I just, yeah, I don't.
If you look at the paper, if you add up the amount over the next six years, it amounts to seven hundred, to round it, to seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, if that's our third, that means, costs you guys about two billion dollars.
Oh, we, no, we spend, our, we spend over five hundred thousand, maybe six hundred thousand dollars on the ambulance service. It's probably close to six hundred thousand.
Because since we're both gonna carry this burden, I think we should both come up with solutions how to manage the situation there, you know.
I, I mean, I think what we're.
I'm not saying you're not managing it, but.
No, 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 I don't, look, I don't, I don't, I don't think.
That's a lot of money.
Let me put it this way, we, we looked at, what is the least that we can spend to add this additional ambulance? Keep in mind that what we're trying to address is that the other provider does not wanna come and cover the calls that we can't cover. Or at least one of those providers does not. South Padre Island, that's the, they, they weren't going to, so forth. Of course, it's a distance away, right? Whether it's coming from Los Fresnos or South Padre Island, there's a distance which impacts patient care because of the time that's involved. So, we said, okay, how do we address the majority of those calls? When do the majority of the calls happen, when we get multiple calls at one time? Obviously, it could happen anytime, you could have an accident Saturday, you know, Sunday morning and have, you know, need three or four ambulances, but the majority of calls come from Wednesday to Saturday during the daytime. And so, we said, okay, let's, let's figure out what it would cost us to have during that time, add that second shift. Now, we're gonna have to have the second.
This is our part of the cost.
Basically, yeah, the second shift, yes. We're, we looked at, okay, let's, let's, we're not trying to recover the entire deficit. I mean, if we were to do that, it would be actually probably a little bit more. We just wanna address the, the fact that we have a secondary provider or a mutually provided that does not wanna come anymore, due to alleged volume of calls they have. So, how do we reduce that volume of calls so that they will agree to serve us? And then we have the issue of the other ambulance.
Los Fresnos.
Los Fresnos, because if we have to buy, which we have to buy another ambulance, the amb, and I don't know if you have a copy of the letter, right, but the age of the two ambulance systems. We have one that's, I think it's a two thousand and ten model, if I'm not mistaken, by the time, and then there's a, there's a, there's a twenty, um.
Two thousand and five, I think, if you don't mistake.
Yeah, yeah, but the, the, the actual chassis is what? It's a sixteen chassis, I think, eleven chassis, I hope I'm mistaken. And so, the eleven, that, that Chevrolet, that one is pretty much done, doesn't meet the state standards, doesn't have shore power to keep the, the thing. So, we, once we get our new ambulance, we're gonna take that one out of the service. And so, we're gonna have the Ford, which is the twenty sixteen, and that will be what we would use to respond to the calls through Laguna Vista. But that, that, keep in mind, that was remounted in twenty sixteen, so we're already coming up to twenty twenty. By next year, where that ambulance is gonna be five years old, it's gonna have to be replaced, because they have a life of about five years.
So, we're gonna pay this money, and we're gonna get the, the second-hand ambulance? Is that what you're saying?
We can't, we can't use the other ambulance.
The new one can only be used in nursing.
Yeah, we can't.
So, we're not even gonna get this brand-new ambulance?
We can't, we can't use it, it's, it's against the regulations. So, I mean, we, we need to add another ambulance in order, plus, we have to have two ambulances anyway. During, during this time of the, uh, the two crews being on duty, we're gonna use both ambulances. But, we have to, you know.
Is there, is there a grant that you guys are applying for to get, to buy this ambulance?
Yes.
How much are they paying?
Well, we already, we already worked for work.
How much was that?
It's two hundred and some thousand.
So, that's already paying the ambulance?
The new ambulance, that's the one that we cannot use here.
So, all this that you're asking us to pay is for services and fees involved with that ambulance?
Adding the second ambulance, not the new ambulance. Because, keep in mind, we have, right now, we have two ambulances, as I've brought it up. One ambulance needs to be replaced, which we're getting replaced with this grant. We, at the time that we did that, we approached the city, and we said, look, we need to, because the rules of HUD, you all have to also participate in this. Said, yes, great, we actually put it out in the paper, we're gonna have a public hearing. And then I got a call from the state, TDA, saying, um, why is Laguna Vista applying for a fire truck? You know, you can't have two applications, because there are, it's a sort of joint app, app, you can't, you can't have two applications. So, I called Mr. Ellis, I said, hey, you know, y'all can't have, you can't have two, either you need to drop the fire truck, or we have to take you out of the application. So, they, you chose to, to pursue the fire truck, uh, the brush truck, I think it was a brush truck. And so, we were awarded the ambulance by TDA, I don't know what happened with you guys' fire truck or not, but we were awarded the ambulance, but TDA was very clear. You cannot use that ambulance except, because it's HUD. It's because it's HUD money, and HUD has very specific rules about, you know, where those funds are used. You know, it's anywhere that if we got a grant for streets, we couldn't pay streets in your state, or, you know, it's, it's, it's not that we chose that, that's just happened, I mean, and we're, we're happy that we got those funds, because that means that we don't have to pay, you know, for an ambulance. But now, we're in a position that we've gotta add another ambulance anyway, because of, of, of that, that situation, and then on top of it, the fact that we have this matter with this Fresnos.
Okay, we've gone over this several times, Mr. Parker.
Okay, so, you're gonna have two guys, Wednesday through Sunday.
Yes.
Twenty-four hours a day.
By a man. Uh, twenty-four, it may be twelve or something, they'll be there.
So, but we'll have, we'll have ambulance service guaranteed.
Yes.
Wednesday through Sunday.
Well, it's not guaranteed, you're gonna have two, there'll be two ambulances.
There'll be two ambulances, right?
Because there're gonna be ten calls.
And, and you guys are gonna serve Port Isabel, Laguna Heights, and us.
Yes, like we do now.
Right, and, and the new ambulance is about two hundred grand plus.
Yes.
And then they make fifteen bucks an hour.
They got plus benefits anyway. But we're, what we allocated was, what, you know, we looked at.
No, I understand, I, I, I'm not worried about that.
We didn't charge you the whole cost of the ambulance.
I, I'm just, I'm just putting it together. And so, well, any call that comes from Laguna Vista won't, won't be bumped if the call comes from Port Isabel?
No, the only thing is that, this is, I use the same agreement that was there before, that y'all had for. I don't know if you drew it up, but it's been for many years. And that agreement says that one ambulance, only one ambulance responds to, it says, it says that one ambulance remains at all times in Port Isabel, which in this case would be because of the, of the issue with the, um.
Well, now you have one, that's guaranteed, right? And you have one that can roam.
Exactly, so we have the two ambulance.
But it's only Wednesday through Sunday.
Well, we would have, we would just use the, during that, that other period, we would use the old ambulance to respond to both cities.
If you didn't have a call somewhere else?
Yes, and then we would have, we would go to the, to the mutual aid like we do right now. I mean, if we got a call on Sunday night, and let's say we were responding here, or, and they call Kevin in Port Isabel, we'd have to call South Padre Island or Los Fresnos to respond, like we do now.
On Sunday night, you'll have two, you said Wednesday.
Well, yeah, whatever the day, let's say Monday night. Whatever day it is that, that, that the ambulance, the two ambulance is not present, it'll be the same. Any more than if we got three calls, which we do sometimes, we got three calls on Friday night.
You never know, yeah.
There's, there, we're gonna have to call mutually. So, it would be the same thing, we're just adding another shift during that time to cover what the peak ambulance times are. And we're counting on revenue coming in.
Oh, yeah, I understand. And what do we have budgeted now?
Thirty-two thousand.
And I, I recognize it's, you know, it's something that, and that's why we delayed the purchase of the second ambulance.
Because, I'm sorry, I thought you were. No, um, first I wanna thank you for coming. I really do, I appreciate you coming, and I think it's important that we work together, and I would love for us to, I wish you can sit down, just to give you the, I wish we could discuss this, we obviously have to discuss this whole, and I, I, you know, in the end of the day, these are all, we're all human beings. It's not, oh, I'm not gonna serve Laguna Vista, because that's a human being, that's a need, you know, and that's a human being, that's a need for his law, and I think we should all work together to serve the human beings of our community. And I, I would love to come up with a way that benefits both of us, and I'm sorry you missed out, we were presented with not quite accurate information, and, um, if I knew it was this important. Um, so I would love for us to come up with something, this is obviously a lot of money for us, if you look at our budget.
Oh, I know, I recognize that, yeah.
I mean, this is like, our, our annual operating budget is one point two, to ask us, that's almost, I, I don't even know what to say.
We, we can certainly work, and that's why.
I would love to work together, as, as, as neighbors, you know.
We did it in Port Isabel for that reason, and that's why we also delayed on the ambulance, and I had so much to remember, because we didn't apply, so we're gonna have to buy another ambulance. But, so we were thinking this next year, we were gonna ask for funds for the additional ambulance. And currently, that never made through, whatever it was, but then we get this letter, which, to me, is more important to make sure we have the response and to buy the second ambulance. We can make the ambulance last another year, two years, whatever, you know, we'll make, we do that all the time. I'm sure you do the same thing, but we have to struggle, municipalities, you know, have that, that challenge, so. You know, we said, okay, let's delay purchasing this ambulance for a year or so, and then, um, that way it eases the cost a little bit. You know, we could look at our numbers and maybe have a few less, less day, one less day, or sort of a response to cut down the cost a little bit. Uh, but there is a really high cost in responding to that, you know, um, and then the other side is that we may start, you know, filing collection against people here in Laguna Vista, and that's, I know that's something that you may not want, so that's something that's also an issue, I know I thought that when you came to visit with us and say, oh, it's, you know, we got this in the works, we pulled off on sending to people in the nearby areas, but we don't wanna burden our local people. But, at a certain point, it's so costly that we have to do something, because it's, it's either, like I said, either the users pay for it, or the taxpayers pay for it, it's gotta come from somewhere, it's not a magic, possibly we can get the money from. Uh, and unfortunately, you know, medical equipment is expensive, the medications are expensive. You know, we mentioned about the fifteen dollars for the ambulance attendants, we've had to give them raises over the years, and I'm pretty sure we'll keep on having to give them raises. I mean, I put a three percent escalator in there just because our costs go up, but if you know anything about healthcare, it's, it's faster than that. Um, but we've, we've just tried as much as possible to contain the cost. And I, I'll, I'll send you our, our P and L, and I, I think that we gave you a copy to me, we can send you a copy of the P and L for the ambulance.
If we can look at the both versus the members, I know there's a big buffer there.
Well, that's just, that's.
It might not be as big as I think it is, but there, there, there usually is a bit of a buffer there, so, I mean, you know what your actual cost is, if you look at your budget, so.
We, we could figure out the cost per run, based upon what we spent, but.
Well, there's no way we can do it.
Yeah, if you look at, let me put it this way, if you look at the cost per run, I mean, it's probably about six hundred dollars. Because we have about a thousand runs, and, you know, we're gonna look roughly six, six hundred thousand bucks. So, I mean, it's roughly six hundred dollars a run. But, again, there's not just the actual cost, but that is, you, you have to build in the whole, you know, for instance, that P and L doesn't include depreciation of the ambulance, number one thing right there, right? So, I mean, that's a huge number that's not on the P and L, right? It's not, it's not on your operating ledger, but it's, you have that depreciation on the balance sheet, so we don't show it in the department, depreciation of the ambulance, for example, interest expense of the new ambulance, all that kinda stuff is not on that, that P and L. But, um, you know, the, the, the cost of having it there, because we can have an attendant there in an ambulance, and then they may even get no calls. You know, we have a lot of time to overnight hours, we get zero calls. But we have to have it there, because it could be you that calls, and we need, we need that ambulance. So, I appreciate your time, I understand it's a heavy burden for you, it's a heavy burden for us. We were, I think, we were shocked by the letter that we got from Los Fresnos, and that's really what spurred us to act, you know, that we can't have a situation where they don't respond to us, because, you know, like Mr. Parker says, well, what happens if there's three calls? Who's gonna come?
The contractor.
To that call? And so, I need a way to go to the city of Los Fresnos and tell them, look, we've addressed your concerns, you're not gonna come so many times, please don't refuse to come to us if we need you to come. And that's, that's what's really spurred this whole, whole discussion. We obviously wouldn't have just showed up in October after the budget was passed and said, hey, give us, give us money, we understand that. But, we got this letter, you know, two weeks ago, and we have to respond to it somewhere. I have to meet with, with them later this week to let them know how are we gonna address their concern, so that they don't come.
Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, there's a, there's a six-year program. You said, you know, can we, would this qualify for CDC funding, six-year council?
Well, it's, um, it's a, it's a project for economic development.
It's a quality of life.
It, it might, it might qualify, I think it would require maybe a, a revisiting of some of the terms, so that we could channel it into something that would be considered a project, as, as defined by, by the economic development. There are a lot of things about it that might qualify, other than it's a, it's a possibility grant, it, it's a possibility. We have broad discretion being in, in Canton County, in the west of Michigan, or, uh, there are certain economic, there are certain project elements that are available to us that are not available in this state. It, it might require, sort of re-raising our estate.
Well, if you need us to make an application to your CDC for, you know.
But that, that's the only, the, the, you know, thing.
It's make an application, and say, hey, we need, let's say that ambulance cost, we need a proportion of that, because it's serving the city, that's something we could do, or adding additional time to promote, I mean, here, you know, for a small.
And so, certainly, there's a way, because, like I said, because we're, because we're, we are what we are. But, uh, yeah, you're thinking the way I'm thinking, about channeling it into something that would be the, of the.
Would you give us some more time to discuss this?
Of course, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, again, we just wanna, we need to address this issue sooner or later, but I understand it's a heavy decision for me, I'm not here trying to force you to do anything, just.
No, it's not a heavy decision, it's just a, it needs to be made, I mean, it's people's lives.
And we, we have to line the limit and do this too, right? Because we, we have to hire a crew.
We're gonna walk in our place.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna have to hire a crew to be out here, and we have to find the money to pay for it too. But I figured out I get part of it, and we're, the other part, we're gonna have to ditch out our part too, so it's, it's, it's a heavy thing for us to do as well, so.
Please send us that P and L.
Yeah, I'll send you the P and L.
It's a heavy burden to put the town for six years, you know, some of us will be here and some of us won't. I just have a hard time committing something like this, would you say?
I just have a hard time committing something like this. Would you say it was for Isabel, or something? Something about, I don't know, six years, for six years, six years is a lot.
And it's only because if we buy this ambulance, we have to have, you know, some, you know, we're buying an ambulance to serve you. Only because of what happened, how are we gonna, you know, if you cancel the contract for one year, we're stuck with it.
And that's also part of the problem. You're buying the ambulance, it's gonna be your ambulance.
We're only charging Carter, we're not charging more.
Mr. Carter?
Do we have any knowledge of how much it costs to get a independent tenant?
That's a good idea, just to talk this over. I don't know that we can talk about this, do we?
Well, I mean, it's relevant to this subject here, we're evaluating the efficacy of this contract. And I'm not concerned about this.
Well, it could be ideal to get our own, but with that, it's a personal decision, small business.
I look at it.
Well, I understand.
Port Isabel came when my mom, when my nine, three-year-old mom fell, and she was at house, Port Isabel came, we have them there in two minutes.
We tried, we tried, and I think we have good service.
Listen again, thank you for coming.
No, no problem.
But thank you, Jared, and I'm sure we'll be happy to-
Yeah, let us know, so, yeah, so we can, I'll come back or whatever.
This is a project.
Yeah. I will, I'll be out there next week, so let me know, I'd be glad to come back. And I will send you the P and L. If I can find it right now, I'll give it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We can either take no action or table it, I think because it's a clear intent to bring it back at some point, table it.
Can I motion to table this item for the last meeting?
Table two.
It would be a thing, you don't have to put it like a tire on it.
Can we talk about this in an executive session? Can we go in executive session, John?
Well, we, we're pretty limited in discussing it as a contract. Though the AG has weighed in several times about the inability of the city just to go in, to go into executive session simply to discuss the merits of the contract. If there are legal issues about it that you wanted to talk to me about, we could go in on that basis. But that would, that would strictly be a legal consultation, you wouldn't, we couldn't do anything like, talk about the merit, the financial merits of the contract, or negotiate with the other parties of the contract under that, under that sentence. So, there's a limited way we could discuss it in an executive session.
The way I look at it, depreciation and manpower, they're around a hundred and thirty-three, six hundred, I think, here. Maybe a hundred and forty.
Did what? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
It would probably cost them about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
What's first? I mean, Port Isabel.
Yeah, with depreciation and manpower. And so-
Their, their annual cost to the ambulance, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Yeah, their annual cost-
For us or for you?
For Port Isabel, probably around a hundred and forty thousand dollars, not including facility, just manpower and ambulance.
By the way, I got your P and L P and L, I give them.
So.
But just, would you even have a comp?
Sure.
Two guys, fifteen hours, five days a week, twelve hours a day.
That's just, are you just talking salaries?
I forgot ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars.
I'm surprised you're gonna go forty bucks, though.
Yeah, so ninety-seven.
So you're just talking salaries?
Plus forty for the depreciation on the vehicle. You know, you're looking at a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars here.
And that's just the salaries, that's without the ambulance?
That's salary and ambulance, that's what it costs to run.
May I ask Mr. Alcoa, I have another question?
Sure.
Um, our third of the calls that we receive, that you receive from us, what's the frequency of those weekly about, do you know?
Um, I have to check with our director, I think it probably varies depending on the year.
You said you get a thousand calls annually, right?
Yeah.
From us?
No, the whole, the whole.
So say three thirty is from us, which can put us maybe a twenty-five, twenty-one, a lot.
I have this information that you gave us at our last meeting.
Do you have the P and L?
No, I don't have the P and L.
Yeah, by the way, we spent five hundred thousand, we took in three hundred thirty, that's what it was. It was five fifteen and three thirty.
So it's just about one person a day?
No, no. Oh, from here?
Yeah, from London.
Yeah, yeah.
You have, sorry, I meant, when we met, with Alma and Chief and Jared and Mayor JJ and-
Charlie Wood.
Charlie, I think that's all.
Wood.
Yeah, Charlie. Last fiscal year, PI cost to LB a hundred and thirteen total. Ninety-three transported to the hospital, twenty no transport, and he said it's an average of about ten to twelve a month.
Okay, well, that's what the numbers are.
That doesn't add up to the third.
I don't know, that's the number, right?
That adds up to ten.
Is that?
That's PI calls to LB.
Those numbers that Charlie Woods gave us was from January to September this year.
Oh, January, I'm sorry.
January to September.
Then you also have the calls that are, I think, apparently the ones that other services are picking up.
Right, that's the second number that you have to.
Yeah, I don't have any friends, I don't know.
That he gave us, the second one.
But it's more than a hundred calls, I know that.
Chief, can you buy each of that number?
So, at this year, the fire departments responded to one hundred and eighty-one calls. About a hundred and sixty of those had BMS calls. I don't know what's Port Isabel and what's Los Fresnos, I just started tracking it this fiscal year. So I don't have numbers from the last fiscal year on how many calls exactly.
They're saying fifty, Los Fresnos say they responded fifty times.
Chief, what did you say?
Los Fresnos are saying they responded fifty times.
Yeah, but they, when that's fifty times, that's, they're counting any time they come, not necessarily, you know, we have a lot of refusals. They come, and I don't know if that one sixty's included.
What do you mean refusal?
People call the ambulance.
And the ambulance doesn't go?
No, they refuse to go on the ambulance.
Oh.
They, they call and they say, you know, I'm not feeling well, whatever, the tenants get there. They check their blood pressure, or they get, you know, an aspirin, whatever it is, said, oh, I don't wanna go on the ambulance. It happens quite a bit. And so, I know that from Los Fresnos, they had the fifty calls, and they said they took like sixteen people to the actual, to the hospital or something like that. That was like a third of the ones that they did that actually transported. Which I think is the other reason why they got so upset, because they weren't getting paid to come out here. Yeah, I could call Charlie and get the actual number.
We're just trying to put our brains together for a solution. I would love, anybody that has a suggestion, could go see us.
Yeah, we, what we really looked at was, well, how much is it gonna cost us to have this? And there's also supplies that you have, and things like that, you know, but it's, they get used, they get used anyway. But you have to have the two, two ambulances stocked, the lifespan of the-
We should buy one and charge you for using it.
Hey, we maybe, you know, they're, it's pretty expensive, but if you want to, it's not worth it. I mean, it's not a money-making business, so, I'm glad, if you wanna do it, it'd be great.
No, it's, I'm just, it's such a heavy discussion, I'm just trying to-
I understand, some levity, yeah, so, um, it's, you know, we just looked at, well, what is it gonna cost us to try to, you know, rectify the situation? And that was the rough number we came up with. We could, you know, look at the margins and try to adjust it, to make it, you know, a little bit less costly. Um, maybe try to ease it in over a period of time a little bit differently. Um, but I do recognize it is a heavy burden to you, just as it is to us, because we're gonna have to hire these attendants and-
But there has to be a solution, you know, because small cities like us, there has to be a grant, or something. There has to be assistance, we missed the first grant.
Well, I don't, don't lose any-
There has to be something that small cities like us can do, so we have to figure that out.
Do we know why those Fresnos refusing to help us, or what?
We should maybe meet with them, because-
Jim Daniels for my sake.
Well, why not? You know, we should meet.
That battle's been going on for about ten years.
Well, let's, we should, we should stop the battle, that's what we can say.
Okay, so you made a motion to table, but do you wanna, you know, keep discussing, I think the chief wanted to say something, excuse me, my error.
No, I was, I was gonna tell you, Mr. Jim Daniels. Mr. Daniels is in charge of the ESD for the county, and we are not part of the ESD. Port Isabel is part, and a lot of this issue is, Mr. Daniels is, is, he's going to Port Isabel, but he's gonna get reimbursed by the county. Okay? Because if we're not part of the ESD, he literally does not get reimbursed when the county, when his county calls. Okay? But we're just not part of that ESD. And with Mr. Daniels, this came up, apparently like Mr. Carter said, that the previous administration was, knew about, about this issue. And, but, and it came out, I met with Mr. Daniels, and Mr. Daniels, the first time I met with Mr. Daniels was a little over a year ago. When, I think I met with him to try to mend fences. And it started, it was going good, and it still is going good. He just, he started well back in two thousand, but then Mr. Daniels, I was here in two thousand. You know, at the time, this, this top of the hill, he wasn't here, he was in New Jersey. And I said, we'd like to work with you, and we've done everything to stay within what he wanted. What he wanted, he doesn't want the fire department responding, they've stayed here, because we're not part of the ESD, so we don't get reimbursed. So if they respond to a call, okay, and put out a fire a hundred feet from our city limits, they don't get paid. So, apparently in the previous chiefs have been responding to these calls. And then he's upset because once the fire's out, he can't get reimbursed for coming out. And that's been a big issue, my fact of the, I was told, because I think we did have one little hiccup. One little hiccup outside our city limits, but we were actually dispatched, so it wasn't like we were stepping on his toes. We were actually dispatched, and our guys went out and took care of the fire, and he got upset. I got the, he told me that I could be arrested or, and sued. So, and I just, at this time, at this time, you know, it's a little media, every time I sit down with him, it's just, you know, I understand he's working hard for his area to, for his city, for what's best for his. But it just seems like with him, we're just always coming out of the short end of the stick. And he has an ESD with Port Isabel, I understand what Mr. Alcoa was saying about the ambulance responding and everything, and we're just not part of that. And that's the issue, but we've been, on our end, our end, we've been trying to get along with the man. Just sorry, 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 every time, a chance I get, I even stop by and visit him.
He's a tough character.
Everything will come.
He's a tough character.
Maybe we should become aware of it, yes, yes.
But that's what it is, and then part of that deal is, because the past administration, it was continuing.
Well, that's what started it, we were going to, he's trying to get the-
I know, I've been to many of those.
Yeah, and we're trying to get the baby area and the heights area, and that's why he's so mad, because he didn't want us to have that. And he fought it, and what he wanted was to have some sort of-
Because if he loses areas, let's say he lost to, to-
The curb.
One of those, the curb, right? Okay? And there was a grass fire, which there recently was. He's not, when we respond, the county would reimburse us if we were part of the ESD. So he doesn't want us to respond, because you're cutting down his area to where he responds. And, you know, and like, it's basically a business, I don't think it's a money-making business, ambulance service. But ours, that's how they, you know, do that same thing. He is the main guy here in Canton County with the largest area with emergency.
We actually gave him our ambulance service area, okay?
Yeah.
That's our town, northern town.
Yeah, but see, we weren't part of the ESD, so we're never included in that.
Chief, I do, the other chief did bring that up to me, and I apologize, I was gonna put that on the agenda, the ESD, but it slipped my mind.
It'll be a mixed decision.
But we will, I think we should address, that might help us a lot.
It could.
The dates messed me up, I'm sorry, Chief.
I think we have a little doubt.
Sorry?
I think it's gonna be a little bit of a doubt.
Yeah.
Oh, it has been for ten years.
It has been.
Yeah.
But maybe it can handle a little bit differently, and we'll get positive results, so.
But if it can help us with our ambulance situation.
So you're still ready with your motion to table? In a second? Motion on the floor made by Councilman Smith, second by Councilwoman Douglas, to table our BMS contract.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter? Councilmember Davalos? Councilmember Goncalves? Councilmember Warren? Councilmember Smith?
Yeah. Item B, consideration of possible action regarding apartment president of the CDC. Senator Ramos is our current president. It's a one-year term.
That's what I just ordered.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Romero. Motion on the floor made by the mayor, signed by Councilwoman Smith, to appoint Dr. Chris Romero as the president of the Community Development Corporation.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Davalos? Councilmember Goncalves?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes. Motion passes. I'm gonna motion to appoint Kathy B. as Vice President. As soon as that finishes, you can run in, okay? I am I, consideration possible action regarding apartment vice president of the Community Development Corporation. I'm sorry, I don't believe this is a motion. I appoint Kathy B. as Vice President. I make a motion to appoint Kathy B. as Vice President of the CDC. Motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Walsh, to appoint Kathy B. as the Vice President of the CDC.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Davalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Goncalves?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Motion passes.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Chief, you like this?
Thank you, Jared.
No, thank you, ma'am.
I am I, consideration possible action regarding apartment of the citizen, to the point Isabel ISD Health Program, the SHAC. Uh, this is an appointment that's been ongoing for, my gosh, when I used to teach, appointments were already headed. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Heidi Richardson. Ms. Chief, ma'am? Motion on the floor made by the mayor, signed by Councilwoman Carter, to appoint Heidi Richardson to the Isabel ISD Health Program.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Davalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Goncalves?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
And thank to Councilwoman Davalos for contacting her to see if she was willing to do, she's done it before. I am I, consideration possible action regarding the IT contract for twenty nineteen, twenty fiscal year with Netlink.
This is our annual contract, it's been at twelve thousand for about five years, so he has embraced it. And it's actually, it was supposed to have been on last month, and it's actually in effect right now. It's already worked.
I make a motion to close our contract for the next fiscal year, would make it? Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Gonzalez, to award the IT contract with Netlink for twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty, twelve thousand dollars annually.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Davalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Goncalves?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Motion passes. Item B, consideration possible action to hire consultant, our firm to provide services related to hiring a city manager. I put this on here, because I went to one of the workshops in P and L last week about hiring a city manager. And we kept saying, the panel said we need to hire a consultant. However, we have two issues here, time constraints and financial constraints. But I wanted to put it out here, just in case we need to do.
I think we're, it would be nice to be able to have the financial capability, especially when you have thousands of applicants, which we don't. I think we've had several good ones, I think we're capable of seething through those ourselves, that's my-
I agree. No motion, it's fine?
No action.
No action? But I have a good vote out there.
Thank you.
I agree. Item B, consideration possible action regarding RFQ for position of city manager. I also put this on here, because if we wait till the end of November, Christmas holidays, we won't even be able to interview anybody until January. Our resource is gone, and I just think we need to end it soon. And start calling through our applicants and calling people that are in the news.
Mayor, may I ask, how would we do that? So, we open it for sixty day or a few, right? So we're barely at, can we change the RFQ?
We certainly can.
We're barely at twenty, like, seven days maybe? So do we, just do a stop to that, or?
The council could declare basically a closure of the applicant period at a future date, or even tonight, if the council desires, and just go it off naturally for that.
And then do we just have to make some kind of call for interviews, or how do we do that?
Or how do we power the reward?
Or how do we re-power what we want?
In order to do interviews in a meeting, it has to be posted, and so the next available opportunity would be at the next regular meeting, or if the council wanted to call a special meeting in between now and then, or just again, not in general.
So you're suggesting we have a special meeting soon to interview people?
Well, I'm, on this, I am suggesting that we close, and we close the application process either tonight, next week, the twentieth, the twenty-fifth, the end of the month, but it means eight can't go until another month. Now, not another six weeks, you have to have time for that. Those qualities to fill in, because she's hired for the same, that's my proposal.
I make a motion to stop applications in one week.
Twenty-second? So that meeting was open, all of these, what date did we start with the RFQ? What did we make the clock, what date was that?
It was after our last meeting, the day after our...
Well, the meeting was the twenty-fourth, so we had it on the TML website, well, but the twenty was sixty days, so, I think it was, the sixty days is November twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
So it's not even, it's not even into, it's just barely two weeks. And how many applicants do we have? I didn't count.
Thirteen, thirteen.
Second, council.
Okay. That would be October twenty?
Did you say twenty-second?
Okay, now we can continue discussing. Are you finished, Mr. Walter?
Um, say we end it next week? I feel like we need to sift through the applications as a body before we call for any interviews. So if we do that, are we going to call a special meeting next week for, for that?
I, yeah, I, I think we should.
Okay, so if we're going to end it next Tuesday, then next Tuesday we'll have a special meeting to sift through these as a body, or are we going to give us a week to go through them? We're probably not going to get a whole lot more between now and then, but, uh...
I was just thinking that the way, the way I've got it posted right now, if, assuming they're available right now, if the council could do that tonight, we could even go into executive session to do that, because we've got a personnel and everyone in executive session. If the council felt it had time to, and they're available, they want to have it. If not, we would, we could do a special, yeah, I don't really really read about that.
No, I, I think it'd be prudent for us to be able to tell people it'll be last, you know, like, we've got a week.
We have to give it in.
Let's go or not go.
I thought someone, too. Someone came up to me at TML last week and said, I'm interested in applying, and I said, it's on the website? And he, he hasn't applied yet.
Either way, I, I think we should be two months, just, for two weeks, that's, for something that's, I don't know. For something that's important, a little thing.
How many didn't we have last time? Three or four?
Four.
Three or four, so I think this is...
But we didn't put it on the TML website, and that's where a lot of them...
You have people from out of state?
Right.
Mr. Carter, this is the twenty, your motion is the twenty-second.
It's just such an important thing, you know, and I just don't want to...
What, what's two weeks for?
The twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, so it's end of October.
Yes, and then we can maybe make a meeting...
See, the, here's the problem with that, is then we wouldn't have a, um, if we wait to get applications in, we have to wait till November the fifth to have our meeting to get together and sift through applications, and then we're talking about Thanksgiving and two weeks. For Thanksgiving, people make travel plans to come down here for a interview, and then...
Well, not really, if we, if we close at twenty-ninth and we meet the fifth, we can interview the twelfth.
Why would we meet the twenty-ninth? I mean, we, we get them as they come out. We're not going to get more than one or two the last day.
Mm-hmm, yeah. You can maybe meet those and meet on the twenty-ninth, that's a good idea. Can we do that legally?
I would, I would, I would feel better, I mean, if we posted it for sixty days, there are people that may or may not be counting on, you know, getting the ducks in a row and sending it in. I, I don't know, but you notify everybody in sixty days, because it'll cut it off a little more than everybody knows might be appropriate. I think, I think we can be able to pull off a meeting, go through the, uh, the applications on the same day as we shut it down.
I agree.
Because we are getting faster to go along.
I agree.
I remember, I'm thinking, I, I'd give it two weeks and call a special meeting on that day.
Do we have a motion, do we have a motion?
I don't.
Do I make a second number?
My, my only problem with that is, uh, our timeframe right now is getting cut short, especially with holidays. And so...
Twenty-six, yeah, what's today?
The twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth, so, so we have time, and if we close until twenty-ninth, we are really going to have time.
No, we may have time to hire somebody, but if we have some time to have somebody get in here, she's leaving, we're going to have, we're going to have time for somebody to be here. That's my only...
Well, I would imagine, I would imagine if you hire, so, say we close at the twenty ninth, just as, so then we interview, we're the first weekend of April. And I would imagine they start, I don't know when people can start. Sometimes they say we'll start the first week of January, no matter when we hire them, you know? Or they beg of immediate, how does that work?
But also, it depends if they, they have a job, they have to give a notice.
Yes, so we might be in trouble, I don't know. I don't know.
You're being very serious, so, I don't want us to do a week.
That's my...
I, I probably don't think quite...
That's, that's just how I...
I'm worried about the time. I want to take to learn everything in the city.
Just how I see things when they go down in a little district in big positions like that.
All right, it's a selfish business, I get it. It's, uh, you know, the, the only reason to go two weeks is in case somebody was, was...
If somebody wanted that bad, they would have already...
Why do they have a C in here? I mean, I don't know, but...
That's, that's like anything else, you know what I mean?
I went on there and, and looked at the website, or, they have applicants for all sorts of stuff, and, and all sorts of programs.
I have a third key, I'd like to see this. I already, I've, I've looked through, I've searched through...
He's already been on his...
Yeah, we got through about half of it.
So, Mr. Warren, you sticking with this?
Yeah.
We have motion on the floor. Any further discussion, Mr. Warren?
I was just going to say, there's also a...
Repentive.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I did, it is move. What is the motion? I'm, I'm going to repeat.
Okay.
Uh, motion was made by Councilwoman Carter, seconded by Councilwoman Davos, uh, to close the RFQs on October twenty-second. Should the meeting include that action, or we need that second?
We don't, we don't have to take action instead of another meeting, that's just...
I can call a...
I mean, you can, and it's...
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Davos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
He just sounded like he was...
Well, that's with regret that I read this next one. Consideration of possible action to advertise for the position of city secretary because of all the reasons we just went through this time.
Make a motion to the RFQ for city secretary, I'll say it.
Do we, you know, cut off day?
Thirty days.
Sixty, oh, no, we don't have sixty.
You don't have sixty days, this, this, this should have been done months ago.
I'm still wanting to twist a certain someone's arm to stay on.
Thirty, thirty days? You just have the days.
Thirty days.
It broke him.
So today is the sixteenth, thirty days is the week before.
By what, so, may I, why, why don't we end it the day before our next meeting, so we have to call a special meeting to deal with it?
Well, that's fine, that's what I did, you know.
That's, that's four weeks, but...
Twenty-eight days.
It's four weeks.
But we are, this is a late meeting, remember, we moved this a week later.
But it's, no, it's still four weeks.
One, two, it's still four weeks.
Is it?
Oh, it is, because of the way the week lines are, yes.
What's the date?
The, the twelve, wow.
Is that, is that, Mr. Warren?
One, yeah, four weeks.
On the course, I have to go to this meeting.
You want to end it on?
On that Tuesday.
November twelfth?
Yeah, this is November twelfth.
Would that give us time for you to prep and give to us? If we need that line? Yes, but if we, okay, all right, I just want to make sure that we had time for people to get their applicants in, like we've been talking. You can print them and get them to us so we can discuss them that night.
And then, can we get it posted tomorrow?
Can we get that?
Can we get it posted tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is, uh, it's a personal press, you want to press with your partners?
We need to post it online.
TML.
TML.
Online, on our website, on Facebook.
Does TML charge you?
I don't know, does TML charge for that?
No.
Good.
Great. Twice it.
Every day.
It's free.
Any discussion on this? Motion on the floor made by Councilwoman Carter, seconded by Councilwoman Walter, to advertise for city secretary ending, uh, November twelfth, posted on TML website, Facebook, and press.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Davos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
She's in denial.
Their arm broke him.
I gave you a check. Motion passes. I debate, this is awesome, so put the same reasons.
This is the one I want.
You want this job?
No!
No! Consideration of possible action to advertise for the position of bookkeeper that Mr. Carter has been saying for years, for the same reasons.
Amen, oh.
Um, as I'm, this is a must.
Four weeks from today.
The same time, is that a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
I second the four weeks from today.
I'll, I'll second that one.
Can I discuss something?
Okay, we have a, a motion, in a second.
Um, as, I, I just wanted to throw this out, just as a discussion. I do think it's very important, too, but we've had, so there's two applicants that are rated as extensive financial experience. I think if we for now get, um, first of all, first maybe, um, before we, we first need to hire somebody, because I believe our city is so small, that if we have a city manager that has the capabilities and experience, that he should be able to do that. That's what I'm hoping, you know, just to save money there, I mean, I think our city is small enough, and our budget is small enough, that if you have somebody that's, has the aptitude and experience that, that, that could work, I just think we should maybe consider that first look at when we hire one, and then hire a bookkeeper.
You're saying that the city manager is going to be the bookkeeper?
I think he possibly can be, yeah. No?
I think it's outside of that.
You think, okay. Just somebody completely on the side?
Uh, he's a city secretary or, or a bookkeeper, or, he's outside the city manager job.
Would you consider the bookkeeper as a full-time position?
I'd consider it.
Or as that, because I think we necessarily need as a full-time position, I, I think we could, we should consider...
Yeah.
You're, you're...
Is there any way that we can move this discussion into executive session? Because I don't want to mention any personnel names.
Yes, there is, we have a posted item for...
I would like to move this, this section into executive session.
Okay. So what do I do with this right here?
Just, just, again, to keep entertaining a motion for, for entry into executive session under five-five-zero-seven-four, to do a rate personnel badge on item, related to item number... Jetty?
Yeah, I withdraw my, my motion then.
And then, because executive session is right after that?
Yes.
In case anyone here is excited about the staff report.
Okay.
So is that okay with you all, if we did the executive motion after our staff report?
We're basically just holding it, that's all good.
Okay. All right, so we're on hold, item P, so we're on hold on item R, staff report, um, pumpkin patch and pumpkin painting party.
Pumpkin patch is there, I was concerned, it's, in, at the library, it's starting yesterday, we live for two weeks, so we're at the point by the flag. Uh, there's going to be a pumpkin painting party on the twenty-ninth, or forty-seventh, at the library, and it's for the first hundred kids, we have the little kids. Uh, Veterans Day is scheduled for Monday, eleventh, at five, November eleventh, at five-thirty, at Veterans Park. Music by the Way is scheduled for November the ninth, six to ten. Drew and the Dance Fall Dreamers will be played, and food and crab vendors will be available, all in rice for the kids. Uh, Christmas Tree Light Event is scheduled for December the fifth, at five-thirty. We'll have the goodie bags for the kids, and cookies, and the hot chocolate, like always.
All right. And more, executive close session, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act as authorized by the Texas Government Code, according to any manner listed on the agenda pursuant to section...
Well, you can probably skip that, five-five-zero-seven-four.
Five-five-one-zero-seven-four to the Russian party personnel. Make the motion to go to executive session? Motion to go to executive session, seven forty-seven, may I have three thousand, we have the... I know, we're ready to go. Councilwoman Carter?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davos? Gonzalez?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Smith? Motion passes.
Sorry.
Councilman, let's force it.
No.
Okay, council came back on a executive session at eight fifty-one. No action. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn at eight fifty-two. It was made by Councilwoman Walter, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Davos?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes. Motion passes. Motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
No, no, oh my God, no!